All right, it's time to meet in order. Two of us leave and drive. Adam, Brad will be with us here today. He's going to do the invocation. We appreciate it for Tom. He's a good friend of mine. At his court in Goff County, wherever you're happy, we're happy.
Dear the Father, we thank you today, God, for this gathering, for these officials, each and every one of you. So that today, God, that you bless us. Give them Lord wisdom and knowledge. The Lord can make them blessed, never away. Blessings each and every individual, sower today. Those who are sick, Lord, those who have lost today, watch over and protect us, Lord. Be in this meeting, Lord, to upbuild McGoffin County tonight. We ask you in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court Call of Honor.
Here.
Here.
Joe Bydley.
Here.
Joe Lee Bydley.
Here.
Greg.
Here.
All right, has everyone signed in that wishes to speak a single? All right. Do we have minutes? We have minutes to approve? Is there any changes, corrections, or deletions? Is there a motion to approve a minute?
Yeah, I'll make one.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussions? There are none, all those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
No, most carries. Is there any reason we shouldn't pay the bills? There are none bills to be paid. I consider approved on transfer. Try to explain the transfer.
We need to transfer from the general fund to the jail fund, $20,000. From the general fund to the LGEA fund, $40,000. And from the general fund to solid waste fund, $15,000. For a total of $75,000.
Motion on transfer.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? There are none, all those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
No, most carries. All right, treasure settlement. You just go through the treasure settlement. Just give those total fund balances at the end of the year. Just do the ending balances here.
Okay, in the general fund, we had an ending balance of $255,665, 79 cents. In the road fund, an ending balance of $774,151,90. Jail fund, $11,487,05. LGEA, $12,510,90. Economic Development Sewer Project, $499,53. Moore Street, $43,44. Solid Waste, $2,013231. Thinking Fund, $027 cents. Right Away Use Fund, $17,88340. Escrow for Clear River, $67,099,67. 911, $158,65574. And reserve, $22184. For our total bond funds, $1,300,35184. That is our ending balance as of June 30th, 2019.
I've got a chart I'll pull up if I put it on the laptop. This is second. But basically what I want to show is that our beginning balances over the last four years have went down significantly. Our current beginning balance of $255,000 is the lowest it has been in the last five or six years. We had over $1.7 million in 2014 in general fund. Why is that significant? Because our revenues are declining and we continue to see the revenue decline because as we know with everything that we deal with, our expenses are growing and increasing even though we're trying to provide the same or fewer services. Just for a reference point, having this beginning balance of $255,000, our bills are pretty close to that. So we started looking at cash flow and being able to provide the same services. It may be that we're looking at in the near future possibly reducing some services. We're trying to take all things into account. We've already had to cut some things in this current year's budget. We're in a 2020 fiscal year now. But we hope people understand that from the general fund and the LGEA fund especially, that a lot of the things that we, services we provide, come out of the general fund and the LGEA fund. The LGEA fund is funded with coal severance money solely. And coal severance receipts are down quite a bit. Four years ago, we were getting $400,000, $500,000 a year. We're down to $200,000 a year. We can't keep providing the same services that we've been doing with less and less revenue. On the flip side of that, we have the highest tax rates in the state. That's indisputed. We've got to get that down. Only way to get that down is to cut spending. If we don't get our rates down, we're going to struggle to bring businesses and invite people in here to come and live here. We can't be the highest taxed county in the state and expect people to flock to McGoffin County. If anything, the current trend that we have is a declining population. And every person that packs up and leaves McGoffin County takes their pocketbook with them. And that hurts all of us. It means that to keep the same services, each of us have to pay more because there's fewer of us to pay for those things. So we ask that you bear with us as services and things are brought up to cut because that's common. And we see it, we see it in the future. Tax rates will be brought up at the next, probably in the August meeting. We don't want to keep taxing our people into oblivion. So we just need to be ready for those things. On the flip side of it, our road fund is okay. We do have money in the road fund. But guess what, folks? We can only spend that on the roads, and that's what we're doing. We can't take that money and put it into the general fund. We can a portion, a small portion for administrative costs, and we'll probably have to do that for cash flow before we collect taxes. But it's $230,000 is the most we can possibly get. But we are working on the roads. We are doing all those things, and we'll have reports later in the meeting on that. But I just want to make it clear that services that may have been cut in this budget was done purely for financial reasons. Do I have a motion to approve the treasure settlement?
Motion.
Motion made or second?
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? There are none, all those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
No, most carries. Next item, we approved that new type of health insurance plan. And part of that plan has a health reimbursement arrangement in it. And in order to do that, we got to have a specific account for that at the bank so that Anthem can withdraw monies out as those monies are used by our employees. So we need to create an accountant to do that. I have to have that approved at the fiscal court. So I need a motion to create a new checking account for the HRA.
Motion.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
My name is Second, I guess I got a little bit.
Motion made and second, any further discussion? All of any, all those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
No, most carries. All right, treasurer's report, you pretty well went through all that already. Unless you have anything to add?
Oh, she had me bring the settlement if anybody wanted to look at it.
We've already approved that. All right, go to departmental reports. Deputy Judge Kevin Howard report to us.
Okay, we start with the Renaissance Center. We, we liked a little bit there. They've been, of course, working on the floor, but we pressure washed the walkways and stone. It was pretty nasty. So we got that completed, community center. Community center, we, of course, everybody I think has heard that we put the new heating and cooling units off. It's done a really good job keeping it really cool. Everybody's really satisfied with that. So the gymnasium is, you can have reunions, you can have wedding rehearsals, anything you want now. So, and work is going on in the daycare section to get it ready for Big Sandy. We had to replace some of the tile. We already had extra tile. We did it with our tile that we had. So we did, we got that done. Painting, that section will start tomorrow to get it ready. The judicial center, we're acid washing the brick. Everybody's seen the brother, the judicial center has the white on the bricks. It's, it looks pretty bad, but we're moving the white deposit. It's going to take a few days to do because it's a slow process. So it's going to take several days. Of course, the environmental study is still ongoing on 911 for the move from the community center to here. Generator, it's going, it's going well. It's proceeding forward. We're continuing, of course, to make the phone calls to verify the 911 emphasis. So everybody expect to get those phone calls. Team of projects, we've completed over eighty projects already. We have about 150 to go. So that's going really well. Road work completed by the road department in the last past month, three weeks. They continued to clean ditch lines, replace tile, apply gravel where it's needed on several several roads. Also replaced decks on two bridges, put new wood on, worked on breaks below the road and repaired pod holes in seventeen roads. So I think that's a lot of progress and they've done a very good job on that. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Questions?
What about the gym floor? Have you painted it yet?
The gym floor is, is, it's a different phase than what we're in now. We're trying to concentrate on the daycare because we have a deadline of August the first. So the paint company is going to do a test on the gym floor to see if the paint, it's Sherwin-Williams, to see if the paint will work on that rubber floor. And it takes a few days to get that done after. I understand it's going to be about a week from now when that test is going to be done. And then they're going to have to wait like seven days to get the results. So we have to make sure the paint will stick to that rubber floor.
Was that painted on it before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was painted on. So that's, that's what's happening to the gym floor right now. So we are in the process of doing that, but we have to do a bunch of testing before we can tell. We want to make sure where we put our money, that it's going to be the right paint.
And let's say the community center be used to play ball and practice during the year.
It's being used three days a week right now to play basketball. And they're loving it. They really enjoy it. The new floor, the old floor back where they can really play ball and not get hurt. It smells good, of course. And, and they really like the architecture, of course, I would too, but everybody likes what's going on. So it's really improved a lot.
Get that back to being community center.
Get it back to being community center. That's our goal. Yep. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, under committee reports, I'm going to put a slash in that, board reports. We have two of our jail board members here and they have a special guest with them. Mr. Allen and Mr. Lovett, if you want to be one of you want to get up and speak interviews, so you probably will.
So I want to start off by saying, first of all, several months ago, Judge Warham in the fiscal court sent myself and Johnny Lovely to represent McGoffin County on the jail board authority. The way that works is you have each county, Johnson, McGoffin, Martin, and Lawrence represented by members who govern the authority. When Johnny and I arrived the jail, we found to be in terrible condition. And as a board, we decided that we needed change in administration. We advertised locally, we advertised all over the place, we took applications, lots of applications. We narrowed them down to seven people and we interviewed seven people. Of those seven people, the jail board voted unanimously to hire Mr. Byron Hansford of Johnson County, which is a testament to his good character as well as, you know, it's a good decision. Everybody was in agreement. And we have tasked Kim with turning it around. And I also want to add that we want to hear feedback from the public. We want the public satisfied. I know incarceration is necessary, but those are also our children, and we want to make sure it's done correctly. Mr. Hansford, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Byron Hansford.
Could you come over? We got a camera right here that just barely, it just sees us.
I didn't sign in, I didn't like the talk.
All right, just come on, there's your computer right.
We're wired up.
We want some people to see who we got.
Byron Hansford, I'm originally Floyd County, been in Johnson County for about ten, ten years, about twelve, twelve years. I'm a retired state trooper. Mostly worked in Floyd County, worked a little bit in McGoffin, Johnson, Martin. That's the area you work with, come over this way. I'm married, got five kids, so I got to keep working. Take care, Liam. And I've been over to jail for a couple of days. And it is, it is an experience. It's not, I worked over there after I retired from state police, I actually worked over there under Randy Madden. And he had that jail in about the best condition you can get a jail. And we'd like to get back to that. Right now, it's not. And we've got to work that out first, to be honest. And we are, well, today I had somebody come in my office wanting to talk to me. And they, you know, they were, they thanked me for having the door open. So apparently the door didn't stay open to the administrator's office. I'll keep the door open unless there's something going on, I have to shut. But the door be open for the public, you know, I'm not afraid to talk to them. They may not like what I say, but if I can help them, I'll help. And the inmates that are there, you know, like I went through the jail today and I talked to them and I told them, you know, we don't put you in here, we can't let you out until they tell us to let you out. But we're going to make sure the conditions here are lifted. And, you know, if they got to work with us, they got to take care of themselves themselves, we'll do our part also. So that's where we are right now. We're just getting started and got a lot of work to do. You want to get any questions?
What is our, your population right now?
Around 220. Let's see, it was 259 about two weeks ago, so it's calmed down quite a bit. You know, that's, that's one of the questions that was asked of me, you know, what would I do about jail population? There's nothing I can do, you know. All we can do is work with the judges and get them out as soon as we can. But, you know, if they bring them, we got to take them. And that's why we got to really work on keeping the place clean.
And this, I mean, what do you see as your short-term goal as far as the gym?
Our short-term goal is make sure it's clean, getting it in a good condition. And the staff, staff is a big thing, they've had a big turnover over there. And I was talking with board members, I think 71% of the guards got one year or less on them. So that's a big challenge there because we don't have that experience to even train them, you know. So I'm looking to hopefully get some experience there as soon as possible.
Is it possible for the magistrates to come over and choose to take a tour?
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, I'm not in a jail, so. Yeah, absolutely. That was one thing the board to ask me, you know, we talked about, and I told them, you know, I want to get the jail in a condition where, you know, the state, sometimes we'll call and say they're coming to visit and everybody's rushing to get, you know, straightened up. I want it to be in a condition where if you call and say, come on over, you don't have to wait, just come on over. Yeah, that's fine.
What about the drugs inside the jail?
Well, there's been a big problem with that, you know. And most, you know, a lot of times, these parents, especially their children, you know, over there, they give them and they think they're in a better place and they won't not have them drugs for a time for that. And then when they come out, they're still on drugs, you know. I worked over there after I retired from state police, I did investigations and that was part of what I did. Because I'll be honest with you, they're always trying to get something in that jail. Mr. Madden, when he was in charge of it, he would not let families bring stuff. Used to, they brought stuff and give to their family member, you know, they'd take it right through. Mr. Madden stopped all that. And that's one way to stop the drugs from coming in. Of course, there's other ways. When they go out to court, you know, they make phone calls and get things set up to where a family member with your option for them to pick up, they'll do it right at the courthouse. Probably doing that too. And, you know, they've got ways, I don't want to say it right now, they've got ways of getting in the jail. Fortunately, just recently, they bought a body scan. And so the inmates, whenever they go out to court or something like that, they scan the body, it's going to show us where they've got something where it shouldn't be. And so we do that, you know, we're doing all we can to stop drugs. You know, and I'm not saying that I know of anything going on over there because I don't. But, you know, on occasions, you may have a guard that's doing something they shouldn't be doing. And if we find that, we'll find them to jail, not still jail, stay in.
Anything else? Well, I appreciate you coming over and we look forward to working together. And I look forward to making progress over the short.
Sounds good.
And I'm, and my doors always are.
Same thing. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Thank you. I'll try to avoid this plugin.
All right, next item is move business. Consider approve award to contract for the bids on the London Master Road Bridge. We only had one. This is from King Crete Drilling Inc. It's for $98,000. It appears to be ever bombed, it appears to be on. Anything you want to add about this bridge? It's just been through the process, been advertised, we have a free bid.
It's a twenty-ton bridge, too. We can take any steel bars, anything crosses.
It's going to be wide.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a concrete bridge. Everything's concrete. It's like a box cover, but it's a concrete bridge.
When will they get started? I'm still waiting on a permit from the Division of Water out there when they have processed that particular permit yet.
Yeah.
We need that fixed pretty quick.
Yeah, we're going to give them.
I submitted it a month ago.
Yeah, okay.
We have a motion now?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
No, most carries. All right, the next item, new business is to consider approving a pledge to the Kentucky Mountain Regional Recreational Authority. I sit on, as county judge, on the Kentucky Mountain Regional Recreational Authority. That's a mouthful, we're actually trying to change the name, which is a little easier to say and to advertise. But this authority was created by the legislature to increase recreational activities in thirty-five counties in eastern Kentucky. And the initial goal is to connect all those counties with ATV trails. That includes all types of recreation. It's just that goal number one is to get ATV trails. Before the legislature, there's an interim committee on tourism last week. And, and we have asked the legislature for a million dollars. But in order to get that, they want to see that the counties have some skin in the game and will make a contribution also. The contribution is, at this time, minimal. They're asking that we don't have to write a check or do anything today. We just have to pledge that we would provide $5,000. And I would like to make the motion that we pledge $5,000 to the K or Kentucky Mountain Recreation, Regional Recreational Authority for the purpose of hiring an executive director or whatever. That's what the initial intention is. Would I make that a form of motion? Any more discussion in just a minute?
Second. We want to, we want to have to give to give. And it's going to be a big, it sounds like a big thing for our county.
It is. And really, McGoffin County already has miles upon miles upon miles of trails, which are technically not legal trails because they're trespassing on folks all over this county. And what the law allowed for was folks that have property that these trails will go through will be indemnified. That means they will have zero liability when the, when the trail goes through. And basically, all they're going to be doing is signing an easement across their property. There will be no, like I said, no legal liability whatsoever on their part. If we can get these permits and things, like West Virginia is doing, West Virginia's selling $2 million worth of permits a year. And 85% of them are outside of a hundred-mile radius of their trails. So what that means is all them people are coming to West Virginia. And I think if anybody's on the parkway on a Thursday or Friday and a Sunday afternoon, you're seeing trucks with trailers, four and five, side by sides, coming and going. I think there was a guy in Floyd County that had a business over on City County 100, just driving by his office that he could notice and count one day. So he got the dozen, a whole bunch, and he just started counting that over a hundred. This will bring people to our area. You bring people, they bring their money. They bring their money, people are going to start businesses. It, it all falls in line. We've got to get our folks out there that own property where these proposed trails are. You know, the Breathed Ridge, there's trails everywhere. There's already a draft design that includes Floyd, Knott, McGoffin, Breathed, and then the Knott County side actually has a way going into Perry. There's another one that's already been established for McGoffin, Johnson, and Morgan, and it's a 28-mile circle. So we've got to get those, where we can get those easements and get them brought into this system. Then we got to start selling the permits. And then once we start selling the permits, those monies will go to help fund keeping it clean, keeping it maintained. And they also are planning on going through the draft version of it, says going through Fish and Wildlife, where they will have additional officers who will be out enforcing the ATV stickers and safety and all that stuff, just like they do on the, on the lakes with the boats. So if we get that, like I'm saying, that, that will help McGoffin County and all of eastern Kentucky, and we really need to push for that. Any other discussion from you? All right, motion on the floor. Any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
No, most carries. All right, the next item is under all business, we have the Battlefield Park Restaurants. We had bids on those, they were way out there, we remember, $93,000. We now have some quotes to go ahead and construct, to start the construction process, and we have to get an architect. I believe this went through the ad as far as the advertisements and all those things. And we have, we have five quotes that came in. We have a quote from Randall Burchett, $5,000. Richardson Associate Architects, $9,300.
Uh, before the legislature's, uh, interim committee on tourism last week, and, and, we have asked the legislature for a million dollars, but in order to get that, they wanna see that the counties have some skin in the game, will make a contribution also. Uh, the contribution is, at this time, minimal. Uh, they're asking that, we don't have to write a check or do anything today, we just have to pledge that we would provide five thousand dollars. And I would like to make the motion that we pledge five thousand dollars to the K, or the Kentucky, uh, Mountain Recreation, Regional Recreational Authority, uh, for the purpose of, of hiring an executive director or whatever, that's what the, the initial intention is. Would I make that before the motion? If we have any more discussion, it just.
I'll second, you wanna, you wanna have to give to give, and it's gonna be a big, sound like a big, uh, thing for our county.
It, it is, and, and really, uh, McGoffin County already has miles upon miles upon miles of trails, which are technically not legal trails, because they're trespassing on folks all over this county. And what the law allowed for was folks that have property, that these trails will go through, will be indemnified. That means they will have zero liability when the, when the trail goes through. And basically, all they're gonna be doing is signing easement across their property. There'll be no, like I said, no legal liability whatsoever on their part. Uh, if we can get these permits and things, uh, like West Virginia is doing, uh, West Virginia's selling two million dollars worth of permits a year, and eighty-five percent of them are outside of a hundred mile radius of, of their trails. So what that means is, all them people are coming to West Virginia. And I think if anybody's on the parkway on a Thursday or Friday and a Sunday afternoon, you're seeing trucks with trailers, four and five, side by sides, coming and going. Uh, I think there was a guy in Floyd County that had a business over at City County Hundred, just driving by his office, that he could notice and count one day. So he got the notes and a whole bunch, and he just started counting, had over a hundred. Uh, this will bring people to our area. You bring people, they bring their money. They bring their money, people are gonna start businesses. It, it all falls in line. We've got to get our folks out there that own property where these proposed trails are. You know, the Breathed Ridge, there's trails everywhere. There's already a draft design that includes Floyd, Knott, McGoffin, Breathed, and then the Knott County side actually has a way going into Perry. There's another one that's already been established for, uh, McGoffin, Johnson and Morgan, and it's a twenty-eight mile circle. So, we've gotta get those, where we can get those easements and get them brought into this system. Then we gotta start selling the permits, and then once we start selling the permits, those monies will go to help fund keeping it clean, keeping it maintained, and they also are planning on going through the draft version of it, says going through Fish and Wildlife, where they will have additional officers who will be out enforcing the ATV stickers and safety and all that stuff, just like they do on the, on the lakes with the boats. So if we get that, like I said, that, that will help McGoffin County and all of eastern Kentucky, and we, we really need to push for that. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All right, motion on the floor. It's, uh, any further discussion? Here ain't none, all of us in favor, signify if I was saying aye? Aye. All right, the next item is, uh, under all business, we have the Battlefield Park Restaurants. Uh, we had bids on those, they were way out there, if we remember, well, they're ninety-three thousand dollars. Uh, we now have, uh, some folks to go ahead and construct, to start the construction process, and we have yet an architect. Uh, I believe this went through the ad, as far as the advertisements and all those things, and we have, uh, we have five quotes that came in. Uh, we have a quote from, uh, Randall Burchett, five thousand dollars. Richardson Associate Architects, ninety-three hundred dollars. Summit Engineering, eighty-five hundred dollars, and Oak Hook Engineering, eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, is there anything you wanna add to this process or anything?
No, they're just gonna be designing the project and overseeing, you know, the work and what goes on there, so, I mean, it's, it's something we have to do to get started, to build it ourselves, you know, to bid it out to build actually, cause last, the last bid was on prefab, and now we'll be building from scratch, which we feel is gonna be a lot cheaper.
And considering the limited amount of funds and that it's, it's, it's a restroom, I think if we can get an architect for five grand rather than.
Yeah.
One of the others, I think we need to go with the low quote of, with Randall Burchett. He's in Preciousburg. Do you entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion in May, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made second to accept Randall Burchett as the architect for the restroom at the Battlefield. All those in favor, signify if I was saying aye? Aye. Those who don't know, motion carries. All right, now we're to communications. Um, as far as, one thing I've got, I, I have hired an additional, uh, temporary worker, JR Bradley. Uh, I would ask for a motion to approve him as the, one of my seasonal workers. This is after the fact, we talked about that at the last meeting.
I'll make one.
Motion in May, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made second, end discussion. And although, favor, signify if I was saying aye? Aye. No. I received a resignation at, from the, uh, from Brian Russell as dog warden. Uh, it was, he will end this Friday, and that pays five thousand dollars a year, uh, as dog warden, and I would make a motion to hire Charlie Brown as the dog warden. He currently works for us now at the recycle, and that's where we keep the truck and everything, it just makes sense to keep Charlie up there.
When does he go out after the chance?
Just on Thursdays. That's the only day they'll take our animals.
Friday, Friday?
Or Fridays, or Thursday.
Friday, Friday.
Friday, Friday. One day a week.
Once you have a problem too, a different day.
If it's an emergency type thing, we'll try to deal with it, uh, but other than that, I mean, there's not a whole lot we can do, we don't have nowhere to tackle it, we get, and that's just part of the contract.
Just accept moving.
One day a week, and what's the numbers that we're allowed?
Three dogs.
Yeah.
Uh, five pups, two catcher kittens.
Yeah.
Not very well.
No, it's unfortunate. Uh, it's, it's another one of them things, that it's a service we need to be able to provide, but we just don't have the funds.
We haven't talked about that before.
We have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion.
I made, I made the motion.
I'll second.
Our motion made second, our Charlie Brown Dog Warden. Any further discussion? Although, favor, signify if I was saying aye? Aye. Those who don't know, motion carries. Uh, real quick, uh, I know we, we talked about some of the roles and things, uh, and the statistics, uh, you know, we got a lot going on, a lot going on all of, uh, the grass cutting, uh, is absolutely driving me crazy, cause it's driving everybody crazy. But, we, we got one tractor, we're trying to cut as fast as we can with that one tractor. Uh, I'm probably gonna be buying two this week. Uh, they're not new, but they're real similar to what we have now, and we'll have one tractor in each district then, and I've still got two of the Tampa requisitions to hire, and I'll try to pick, uh, two people to, to fill on those tractors and get us through this moment season, and then next year, uh, we'll just, we'll, we'll make motions like Tim, but we'll try to hire some, three guys to do nothing but drive those tractors seasonal from April until September, October, because one tractor cannot keep them, it just ain't gonna happen. You know, everything we've already cut's already grown up, and we still ain't, uh, with the first cut, and, and that's, that just couldn't be helped. We can't get out there and cut in the rain, and then once you do cut it and it does rain, it grows up right behind you, and we know that from the yards, but, uh, but we are coming. The people that we haven't got to yet, we're coming. I just want everyone to know we are coming. And same thing with the patch, you know, people will start saying that we're patching it, and everybody's anxious to get it, cause they're tired of getting the potholes, and I'm tired for them too, but, uh, we've got seventeen done, and we're getting better and faster at it, and, and we still got plenty of packs left, and we're going at it as fast as we can go.
So how's that good?
So far, I think it's done well. It really is, it's, uh, it's, it's doing a good job. We ramped a bridge with it, uh, we may need to go in and just roll it in again, down on the gangster road. It, uh, they ramped it on both sides, so it's, it's tacking well.
Totally good.
And it's got good consistency, and we just haven't learned how to use it, but, but after we got done the first couple ropes, uh, them boys did a good job.
Yeah, they totally did.
I don't have anything, you know?
These tractors, uh, they need designed, if you're talking about, you put a mowing machine on.
We're gonna build it just more like we got now, so we can drop it down and go along. Uh, we went down and looked at, uh, state surplus, and, and they had, they've got a, what, like fifteen or twenty sitting down there, but God, this'll be, the time you put them on a county road and drop the, uh, the mowing blade down, you'd be on people's, uh, porch. You know, we, that does us no good, and we couldn't drive them down the road, they're the only machines there ever was, and it's a rough shake, too.
Yeah, is these tractors big enough to handle a bush all the way down?
Oh, yeah.
Put a bush all the way?
If we have a, a bush all, I mean, we, we'd have to have one that'll be on the side.
That's what I'm saying, the side by, the bushes, yeah. I've got a really fat bush though.
Well, now that part, I mean, we've got the one tractor that we got now with the boat.
Yeah, that one boat will never.
Oh, I know, that's where we'll have to get the attachments, I think, there are many excavators, uh, because they'll, the hydraulics work a lot faster, that tractor we got now doing that, the hydraulics move really slow.
Yeah, it's slow.
And it's a slow, it's a slow process, but we can do it here, really.
Yeah, we can buy attachments for that, escalators.
That's what we need, that's the show right there.
Cut up, ditch out, yeah, but we gotta get caught up on all these diggers before we can do that.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else. Magistrates, District one?
About to grant about the water lines, I think, they were, they got, they got, they were getting.
I, but I have.
Still want water, you know? You get them people water. They deserve that water.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I know where you're working with.
We're still, we're still looking at it.
You're scared you make it a little bit faster, maybe.
I, I can't make them give us no money.
No, that's right. It does take money, you know?
It takes money, and it's a slow process, especially.
You get them water, you know?
Yeah, yeah, but.
I told this woman, one woman running Little Fork, she said, they tell me ninety-five percent of people got water, and she said, you know what? I'm one of the five percent that ain't got it. And that, we're gonna help her, I mean, yeah, we're gonna get them water.
Far southern end of our county and, uh, in the north end of our county, north, north, northwest part, you know? Uh, it's still on the regular, we're still working on it.
I know. Great, well, I just went over everything that, I guess, we can jump over.
And, you know, like, you, like the bosses on, the county workers, I'll tell you what, they do a lot of work. They do a lot of work, and a lot of people might not know that, appreciate it, but, you know, a lot of times, when they're mine in, and maybe some of the bucks, and I'll check on them and everything, but, and they've done a whole lot of work, and, you know, we wouldn't have been so far behind, that moved the whip.
It's, it's, they all quit, right?
That's what hurt us, I mean, you know, the big flood and everything, tore up everything, so I got way behind, and then I go to come down, a man in his age, cutting off, the boy cut off, real bad, you know? Just a tick and everything. He's done a good job, and all them boys did a good job, and I, I appreciate them, you know? I told them all the time, the more you all do, uh, the better it looks, the better you make us look, you know? And it does, you know? And we got a good group of men, got a good group of men, so, I appreciate it.
And the road signs, we've not forgotten them, they're just, by our witness, all the way.
Yeah, a lot more than people operate the track, you know, we, a lot of these roads, I don't even know where I'm going or nothing, you know?
Yeah.
See, the day I took him and showed him, I had a road, where to go to and everything, yeah, he, he want road signs up himself, you know, where he knows where to go to.
And that's something that we, uh, probably should have addressed too. In the coming days, you'll see prisoners from West Liberty, uh, being escorted or guarded or whatever you wanna call it, supervised by some city staff. Uh, we're gonna have, we will have a, an interagency at Greenland between, uh, the county and the city that'll be brought up probably the next minute, maybe before, uh, where they're, the city's sending three workers down to be trained to, to do it, and they're gonna